This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the town of North Haven.
I'd like to call April 11th, 2024, regular meeting of the North Haven Board of Education to order at 6:30 PM. First course of business, I would like to welcome new board member, Michelle Gugnialamo.
Hi, hello.
May I introduce yourself and let us all over the box?
Thank you, thank you. I'm very excited to be here. Just a little bit about myself. I have been a resident in North Haven for the past 13 years. I'm a proud mom to two children, my daughter who's in 10th grade and my son who's in 3rd grade. I've been a teacher for the past 14 years. I was a middle school teacher for 10 years and I'm currently a math interventionist at a 3-5 school. Again, I'm really excited to be here and taking on this role and I'm honored to get to work with such a great group of people. So, thank you for having me.
Thank you for being here. I'd like to have, may I have a motion to approve the March 14th, 2024 Board of Education Regular Meeting Minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Staying?
I'm staying.
We have approval of the April 2nd, 2024 Special Board of Education Special Meeting Minutes.
I'll move to that.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Staying?
I'm staying.
Student representative report. It looks like we have just junior class here today. What's up, Joe?
So academically, quarter four began on April 4th and then the juniors also recently took the SATs and upcoming we have the NGSS Science Test, which is like the SAT but for science. And then we also have AP Testing, beginning on May 6th through May 17th. As well as that, there is senior scholarship application deadline coming up. All seniors are reminded to apply for the NHHS Scholarship and the application form is found online. All sections must be complete, including securing teacher recommendations by April 12th, 2024. There's also the CT Manufacturing Careers Roadshow. Quinnipiac University is hosting the Manufacturing Careers Roadshow on Thursday, or today, at the MNT Bank Arena in Hampden. This is a presentation to help students understand and explore the endless opportunities related to manufacturing in Connecticut. There is also the Sophomore Parent Breakfast that happened on April 5th. This was to help sophomores get information on things upcoming that might help them for their colleges and prepare for junior and senior year. We'd also like to say thank you to the North Haven Education Foundation for a generous grant of outdoor tables. These tables will be arranged on the library courtyard for student use. They're a commercial grade and built to last, but also comfortable with seat backs and umbrella stands. We appreciate all that the Ed Foundation does to support our school. Please continue to support the Ed Foundation's good work. And then there's also a summer college opportunity with Southern. Students in the class of 2025 and class of 2026 are eligible to apply to take summer courses at Southern CT State University through the Early College Program. Taking these courses is called dual enrollment because participants are allowed, enrolled at both NHHS and the university level for such courses. Students who successfully complete the courses will receive Southern transcript credits, which only cost $55 for its summer session. And then we'd also like to congratulate Ava Shagnan and Jack Green, who were selected as NHHS's Connecticut Association of Schools Outstanding Visual and Performing Arts Award winners. They were honored on April 2nd at the 2024 CAS C I A C Ceremonial Reception Dinner at Aquaterf.
I have one question about volunteer hours. Do students still need volunteer hours? Because volunteer hours are still enacted, right? You still have, are still trying to fill your... So I would just make a quick reminder, eight weeks if you're graduating. So if you're in need of time, get it together because it's running out quick. There's plenty of opportunities for you. Go to your guidance counselor, go to any magistrate here and they'll point you in the right direction and make sure you guys get that squared away for yourselves. Don't, there's enough pressure finishing up your last year of high school after worrying about that at the very end. Does anybody else have any questions for Joe? Joe, good job.
Good stuff, man.
Appreciate it. Okay, we're going to move on to public comment. Public comment now is for all non-agenda items. If anybody would like to come to the mic and speak, just please come up, state your name. That's right, take your time. You have to state your name and your address, please.
Hello.
Yeah?
Hi, I'm Emma. I'm...
Speaking to the mic? Perfect.
Hi. I'm Emma. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I live in New Haven. My, I come here through the Open Choice Program. I'm a freshman at NHHS. I would like to speak about two issues tonight. First, I would like to make the board aware how disgusting and destroyed the student bathrooms are. I have provided pictures showing the broken locks, dried blood on the stalls, broken toilet seats and missing covers from the feminine hygiene disposal boxes. I find it disgusting, unsafe and unsanitary that the student body has to experience these conditions. The second related issue is, as a non-binary gay student, I do not feel safe using a student bathroom where I cannot lock the stall door and go in private, especially considering the bullying that occurs in our community. One potential solution for this would be having more single-use bathrooms on each floor. Currently, there's only two available. One in the nurse and one in the library on the second floor, which is where we're in right now. The schedule does not allow for traversing, traveling floors to use the bathroom and more time out of class means less disruption time. Last, I'm not sure why people get offended by calling a bathroom gender neutral when it's just a single-stall bathroom. This access would help students that are either LGBTQ or just don't feel comfortable going into the bathroom, either because they're disgusting or because they feel uncomfortable. This country has experienced racism, homophobia and hate for many years and it just seems to continue. To paraphrase Martin Luther King Jr., "I have a dream that women, men and all people will be treated with equality, that people won't be scared to hold their partner's hand while walking down the street and that the world can go forward instead of backwards. Let's end all this homophobia, racism and the start of wars for foolish reasons. Let's find a way together to rise up and put an end to all the hate in this world that started so many years ago."
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to call up and speak? Seeing no one, I'm going to move on to the consent agenda. Retirement of Susan Bass, North Haven High School English teacher and department coordinator, and the resignation of Deana Robinson, the county payable specialist. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, can I just say for Susan Bass has left such a lasting impact on this district, it will be felt for years to come. I have heard the name Sue Bass in conversations regularly and we thank you very much for your years of service. Both kiddos and parents and fellow teachers all talk about how wonderful you are.
Truly a great lady.
Yeah. Thank you to Deana as well. It's appreciated, appreciated.
Yes, thanks a lot, Jennifer, for sure. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? abstentions? Thank you. Pre-K presentation. Tracy Gammadella.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Gammadella and I am the intro principal at Green Acres Elementary School.
I'm Christy Scanlon and I'm the elementary coordinator for student services.
We're tonight to talk to you about a little gem. A gem. It sparkles, it shines, it smiles, it laughs. And it is our little preschool. Seventy-seven, excuse me, seventy, seventy. Little friends who come to our school every day, half in the morning, half in the afternoon. Preschool is near and dear to my heart and I will say this to you, not only because it is Green Acres Elementary School and if you come to my building, I will say to you, find, if you need your bucket filled, go find the pre-K babies. Yesterday, we did a walk-through. They were playing with some toys in the gym and it's just so much love and excitement. My brother actually was non-verbal for the first six years of his life. He was born in 1985 and in 1989, he began at the preschool. And by the time he left the preschool and he went to kindergarten, he was speaking in full sentences. And we owe that to the teachers at the preschool in Green Acres. And then fast forward, just not many years ago, my daughter was a preschooler there. She was a neighborhood peer. And we still talk about her days with Miss Allison, Miss Tara and the Pocahontas costume that I had to buy her and that now hangs in the closet. That cost me a lot of money because she played in the dress-up area. Early intervention is key. Partnership is key. It's the first experience when they come to Green Acres as a preschooler. And so we're so excited tonight to talk to you about some potential for that preschooler, the partnership that we can put resources into, the partnership that we collect to establish. So, go ahead, sorry, everything. So our driving force is Connecticut Early Learning and Development Standards and the CTLs are basically the preschool version of Common Core. So we have looked at the standards and really focused on, we need to focus on the equity for all children, high-quality learning experiences, communication, not only to kids, but our families, bringing our families in. And then the individual support to help them all thrive, succeed. And we looked at our kindergarten standards and we said, okay, what do they need from here that can really help them be completely kindergarten-ready and successful and hit that ground in front and just build our district right from the start. So this is what our preschool program currently looks like. Seven kids and so we have a few come in the morning, a few come in the afternoon. So we have a four-year-old classroom, so an AM and PM session. The numbers have changed a little bit over the days as we are constantly teaching children. We have, so we have two four-year-old sessions. We have a mixed-age session. So I have an AM session of mixed three-year-olds and four-year-olds and a PM session of that. Then we have a classroom that has three-year-olds in the morning, three-year-olds in the afternoon and then we have a self-contained classroom and those children, excuse me, are integrated without the day and have experiences with our neighbors. So our current half-day schedule, as you can see, there's a lot going on in a very short amount of time but it doesn't really allow us that time to dive into the Connecticut Ls and to get those standards and to get them, those readiness skills and to build on that that we look like. Because every time we have these little transitions, that takes time. And... And just... Because they're just here for the day. By the time they arrive, by the time they come into the day, their table trays, their specials, they actually are, they go to specials, which is so wonderful and so it's nice to see the kids out and about in the building. They have snack, they're circle time centers that don't actually recess and they're just there. And I don't want to say that there's no academic thing, but there's no skills time, let's call it. There's just none of that time right now for true skill building. So we come here tonight to ask you to propose a full-day pilot of our four-year-old children. We would like to pilot two four-year-old classrooms next year, full day. They will begin like everyone else. For me and for the two at grade 02. And here's what it would allow us to do. The benefits of a four-year-old program, I'm going to put my ELA cap on for a second. The benefits of a four-year-old program would really help us lead some great curriculum work. And so we were able this year to purchase integrity. For, and we've talked about this, we hate the pay-per-view as well. We were able to purchase our integrity for our preschoolers. So if you walk into the classrooms now, you hear the teachers working on integrity with children doing all these awareness activities explicitly. We have our parent educators doing them as well. And so it's so nice to see they know the routines and structures of the place and they started it in January and it's thriving and really moving along. The other piece to this would be, we would be able to provide some literacy and math support. We use the resources at Green Acres to provide, we'll show you that slide, the proposal for the full day, but there would be some center time. And so I'd have some staff members coming in to do some literacy stations and some math stations and some curricular friends working on a toolbox for math for us for preschool. We're working on what is a pool play for letters and sounds in regards to four-year-olds and how can we help them be better prepared for kindergarten. We also are looking at a data system so that we can use that data and move it into kindergarten and be able to track our students better. So we're very excited about that. We'll use those appropriate measures to help them expand our roots and we will build those foundational kindergarten skills. Play-based learning. We've put some time in for play-based learning as well. And so we're looking forward to do some good work with the teachers. Again, we came through the pre-K through grade one, talking about what does play-based learning look like? What is the teacher's role? What's the parent educator's role? We have a bakery right now. We're planning a little play-based learning in pre-K right now and so we have a bakery. And so we're teaching the kids, you know, hey, what do you want on your muffin? What kind of muffin you want someone gets to be the person who takes the order? We're going to move into stores and each classroom is going to be, one classroom is going to be Target, one classroom is going to be a grocery store and we're going to teach them about play-based learning within those skills structures. So we're excited about that. And then the foundation. We're going to call them neighborhood peer role models from now on. We previously called them typical peers but we would like to adjust the name to neighborhood friends. And so we have these role models in the classroom who really are speaking to the children and they're working together and they're working on our social skills, things that we know that kids need. And so we'll have these role models running to go to kindergarten and we are very excited about that. So with that, here is our full day, which as you can see has those tenants that we have in our half-day. But then we built in the ELA centers. We have a quiet time. We know that this is going to be an adjustment for them. So we have a quiet time built in. We have net centers. And then we have that purposeful play, which is a Connecticut initiative that we're doing right now. So we're teaching them those skills on how to have conflict resolution, how to work together, how to problem solve together through activities that we create that are still facilitated but not the darts involved. We just kind of help them work through the problems, but we let them navigate the situations themselves. And then we're going to have our phonics and read aloud, build those foundational reading skills. And it is a role with a process in our dismissal. So they do have, we tried to build in a balance of time for them to have treats and get their energies out, have those movement things, their sensory needs. But structure in their day as well. And purposeful activities for them to build those learning skills. Where's my proposal? So our proposal for the 2024, 2025 school year is two full-day four-year-old classrooms. We would like to call them the big hawks. So two classrooms with four-year-old students. The students will attend school from 8:30 to 3:02. And then we would remain with our two mixed-age classrooms and they would be called little hawks. And so those classrooms would be made up of a mix of three and four-year-old students, understanding that what ends up happening is there is a birth-to-brief process and some of those kids come in along the year. And so we will add them into this whole year and the classrooms as you think. Questions?
Well, thank you for your presentation. Very good.
Thank you.
I know I have a couple of questions also to that and I'm sure some of the other members do. So it's third and fourth grade, correct? I know this is for fourth grade full day, which is...
Fourth and fourth-year-old, two-year-old.
It's okay.
Oh, yes. Three years, almost a third grade. Three-year-olds and four-year-olds, right? So the three-year-olds remain on half-day?
They will remain half-day. The districts around us, Ron, are actually, they have three-year-olds. We've done a lot of research in general about all the districts around us. Most of them have half-day for three-year-olds and full-day for four-year-olds.
So the number of four-year-olds in each class should be ish?
Eighteen.
About eighteen?
About eighteen, yes. And our neighborhood peers and our students.
Okay, so looking for thirty-six-ish as the whole number?
Yes.
Okay, and you obviously whipped your transition from a half to a full. Staffing and everything has been considered and you're all set with that and you have no...
Absolutely.
No problems filling spots and, you know, I mean... All four-year-olds for half-day is menacing. I can only imagine. A full day, I... Bless you for that. So I just want to make sure that, you know, that consideration has been taken. I'm sure it has. You resigned well and I know what you're capable of, so I'm not concerned about that. I think I just want to say it out loud maybe for the people who aren't here that can hear that, that have made that consideration in all sense. I'm fine. I think it's the next move and where we should go. But, you know, I'm one vote on the committee, so if anybody on the committee has anything they'd like to ask, I'm sure there are questions.
He says, again, Goldie's waiting to come in.
Go ahead, Ty.
I have a question. Just so excited about this opportunity for our, this month. I have made other decisions before that need to be made for us to have that opportunity in this right for our families. It's big and for four-year-olds, it's just a matter of getting them ready, seeing them ready for what the part is going to be. It also helps with that transition from, you know, from the daycare home to kindergarten. I think this is an exciting year and hopefully bring out our hopes for you. So I'm excited about this opportunity.
Thank you.
Could you stop here? Go ahead.
Is there going to be a change in the cost structure for the families who participate? So we talked about that, huh?
Sure. We had a little bit of dialogue in regards to the costs. My understanding, I believe it's $150 a month and we would like to keep that cost the same for this upcoming school year just to make it fair and equitable for everyone.
That's amazing. Like, I just want to commend the presentation. I love the gumption we've got going on here and I love that we're able to offer something full-day for our families at a really affordable cost, especially with the new requirement for kiddos to come into kindergarten at five. You know, a typical private daycare center with a curriculum is like $20,000 a year and this feels like really good. This is a pilot program, right? So are we planning on potentially continuing it and like looking at the efficacy of the program and potentially expanding it? Am I too early on that?
The answer, the ultimate answer is yes. The one barrier or roadblock would be space at Green Acres. However, there are spaces at other schools that we could look into and continue to grow the program. So, yes.
This is so, just so wonderful to set kiddos up for success as they enter kindergarten. So thank you for presenting. I love it.
My question was about space. Because we talk about that a lot here. But I think I'm gathering that the two classrooms are already there.
Yes.
You're just kind of shifting the hours instead of an AM and a PM. It's just going full day. So we're not, you don't need to create a new classroom or need more space. It's space that's already there.
We're using the space and we have the resources that we have.
Okay. Does it? I'm going to ask the other ones.
Sure.
I have a few questions. So will big hawks and little hawks still be at the 50-50 ratio for neighborhood friends and students who are on IEPs?
Yes.
If, the way that it's sounding like you're structuring this, you don't need any more staff, so does that mean that there will be less slots for people? You said that you have 70 students that are there right now?
Because it's a pilot. We are using, so in February, what we do is we look for our neighborhood peers. And so we have slots available already for those neighborhood peers. We might end up with a few extra neighborhood peers that we'll be looking for. We have a waitlist. So we use the students that we have first and we'll fit those slots.
Do you know in general how many people get turned away? Like how many people apply and how many people get turned away?
I'm going to be very truthful here. If we don't turn people away.
Okay.
People turn away because it's not full-day. Most of us, all of us, our moms and dads are here. We are looking for a full-day program, we are. So it's honestly, it's become a struggle to get neighborhood peers because it's not a full-day program.
Okay. I heard you say that this year it would remain $150 per month? Is with that, if this pilot works, it might be something that would change over time?
Potentially it would be something that we'll look into, but of course not before the vote.
Yeah. And I mean, I want to say both of my children went through Green Acres Pre-K and did wonderful things there. And it was difficult sometimes with the half-day, especially when neighborhood friends aren't provided transportation. For the neighborhood friends who would be doing this full-day program, would they now be included in transportation?
That's something that we would have to look into and we're still looking at bus routes and whatnot. We're going to have a more clear answer as we get closer to the end of the school.
Okay. So the, anyone who would be a full-day neighborhood friend would provide the transportation?
And most of them currently do right now, right? So just so you know, our neighborhood friends, they are already providing transportation to and from. And then we have a few other kiddos who we've added to provide their own transportation.
So I think it's a great idea. I mean, I think that the town definitely needs more pre-K opportunities, especially through the public school. I think it's also a great idea to potentially expand to other areas eventually. On the ride from Montlis area to Green Acres area is quite a hike, as I've known from basketball practices and everything else. So I think it would be great to eventually expand even more. So thank you.
Joe?
Hi. In order to conference with the crazy safety for defending the... All of my students, we just, you know, we continue to give them steps and checks with that through programs. It's phenomenal the things that they do there. For both, uh, both grades. I think the only thing that was really missing is how the pre-K core and the more than that compared to the marketing
And the meeting prior, we invited all the administrators to come in and have these types of inspections. So I think our next step for that is to give them resources, tools, experts in the field to help increase the dialogue, increase the resources that they can utilize to help address those situations. So we'll be planning for that over the next few months. And the third part that we spoke about was what it means to belong, and that's what we're going to be working with the elementary through middle and high with our diversity club, speaking to each level and really what it means to belong at North Haven Public Schools, what it means to the students here. And we're going to compile that in some type of video and really start promoting that aspect as well. Because I think belonging really does speak to all levels of diversity, equity, inclusion might be something that elementary students don't quite grasp, but belonging, I know where I belong, I belong the Ridge Road, I belong at Green Acres, I belong in North Haven. So that's something that they can more grasp on a little easier to. Tyus, did I hit it off? Okay. Do we have any questions?
Tell you sort of comment.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so we're.
One second.
Yes.
Go ahead, please.
Very.
You're.
I can hear you now. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, so I just wanted to say, first of all, if we very much sit back in the corner, I'm hearing that I have everything, but I also want to make sure that the services that we celebrate about the local autism awareness, the grade groups yesterday and the. And we have asked you before our next four days, day is a very small, as well as the I don't know, for engineering areas of our friends. And it's awesome for us to start that role and be more honest with ourselves.
So we are at that point of the school year where we start talking about the end of the school year. So with all of our primary days and snow days, we hit 181 school days on Friday, June 14th. So that will be the last day of school. And speaking with Dr. Dali, high school senior graduation is scheduled for Thursday, June 13th. I believe it usually starts at 4:00 PM if I remember correctly. Thank you, Anthony. The interesting part of that is it's board meeting day for June. So I just wanted, Ron and I spoke about that earlier, and it will just be on stage. In the past years, and I think as well as this year, the last three days of school will be half-days, early dismissals, I should say. So Wednesday, June 12th, Thursday, June 13th, and Friday, June 14th will all be early dismissal days for the entire district. Any questions or thoughts on that?
No, I'm going to wait to see if you answer my question.
The next, I am actually up for a potential vote tonight by the board, is the 2024-2025 district calendar. It's very similar to last year's. I know the board had it in their packets. The one area I want to draw attention to is the winter break during, in December. It is actually like an extra day this year because of how Christmas falls. Christmas falls on a Wednesday, I believe, and normally we have school on the 23rd, a half-day of school on the 23rd. But to come back on just a half-day for a Monday when I think families would probably be on vacation, that's the one change, that that would be a day off of school. It doesn't push the end of the calendar, the end of the school year, I should say, that far, that far into June, we still are scheduled to use the Valentine's Day night. Do you think any?
Yeah, you just fix and change it.
Full day off, yes.
Yeah.
Other than that.
You can't have them have Saturday, well, Sunday, well, a half-day, Monday.
Correct.
No, no, you'll be echoing it all.
So that would be the district calendar. Any questions on the board on the district calendar? Thank you, Joyce, for all your work on that.
Let me start with Zoom before we take any questions here. So I see any questions Joe, do you have any questions about the calendar?
No.
Goldie, any questions about the calendar?
No, no questions.
Thank you. Anybody present any questions?
I just have one quick question about Yom Kippur, which falls on October 11th as a half-day. Is that going to be considered a special observance day as well? I believe, I spoke to several friends, nothing starts until sundown that night. So will there be like athletic stuff happening in the afternoons and stuff like that?
There will be.
There will be other.
And that's because we can't, I remember we talked about this last year, like the athletics portion falls very much under CIAC.
Correct.
So the like district-wise, we can control that, but CIAC-wise, we.
Testing that type of scheduling test and things like that.
That's really helpful to go along.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm just looking at the half-days real quick.
Sure.
Again, sometimes the half-days creep up on parents. They're like, what?
They do.
What? It's a half-day?
They do. They're hard and days off.
Ah, can we approve this? And then can I ask you a question about middle school graduation? Okay.
Want to ask it now?
When is middle school graduation?
To this issue, Lori will wait until the high school is scheduled. And it's usually the day before high school. That's when she, so it'll be the 13th on that half-day.
Oh, I thought it was the last full day.
You might be right.
It might be because she might be.
Might be because she might need the three. You might be right on that. Not 100% sure. But I will get that out to the board as soon as.
Okay.
Because she does go the three shifts now with the three different.
Right. And we had chatted just a little bit about, there's a group of the kids that are leaving that are eighth graders because they're in the regionals.
When does that start?
They, I think the 14th in West Virginia.
Okay. Okay. I will get that out to the board in the community as soon as it's.
It starts on the 4th, 4th, somewhere they'd be.
I think they would be, I don't know. I can find out.
I think, yeah. Why don't you, if you can get that and get back to them, because they'll leave on the 12th.
Right.
That's a whole nother thing.
Right. Because I remember we briefly chatted and we said, well, the last three days are half-days. It would probably be that full day.
Tuesday.
Yeah.
Because there are a lot of travel, like they get there two days before, then a day of practice, acclamation.
And they're, I think they're driving. So I think they're driving. So they would definitely.
I think it's a fair point, the three, how Lori writes about them, three different teams that they may need.
And I get she needs time. So if you're listening, I'm not pushing the.
I'm serious.
That's a good question to ask. Any other questions? May I have a motion to approve the 2024-2025 district calendar? So I'm going to.
Second, any discussion?
All in favor?
I agree.
Zoom. Ty, in favor?
Yes, I think.
Goldie?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Thank you. Opposed, no questions. Zoom. The Assistant Superintendent, report.
Okay. This evening, I would like to highlight our wonderful art department. And Joe actually had spoke about it when he was here. We currently have several pieces of student work in the Creative Arts Workshop Annual Southern Connecticut Conference, as well as four award winners at the Scholastics High School Art Competition, two Connecticut Association of Schools Outstanding Visual Arts Award winners. And we just entered student work into the Congressional Arts Competition. We have lots of talent here. Thursday evenings, Kaleidoscope of Creativity at Quinnipiac Art Expedition was wonderful, well-attended by many North Haven families. Most of us couldn't go because we were at the public hearing, so we had a conflict there. Art Beat will be held in May at the high school. All students will have an opportunity to display artwork. It's truly one of my favorite events of the school year. This group had approved a field trip to New York City, and we actually had to postpone it because of some things in the fall. Our students went and they had the most amazing time, and they are working to create portfolios of their photography work from the trip for either their AP Photography class, or some students are in Advanced Photography Dual Enrollment at Quinnipiac. So it really was a wonderful opportunity, and they were very excited. My last item is that we are again at the time of year where we talk about our summer programs. Our Summer Skills Program will look to strengthen our academic skills from students' previous year's grade level, so that they're ready for the upcoming year. We will focus on priority standards that align and bridge the gap from year to year. And our class sizes in that program will be limited so that we can really engage students in small group instruction and give them immediate feedback. We will also run the Summer Enrichment Program, which looks to prepare students to be ready for their new grade level in the fall. We again use the same priority standards, but we have more rigorous tasks and really look to the year ahead. Both of these programs will run Monday through Thursday, starting July 8th and ending on July 25th. There will be two sessions, an eight o'clock session and a 10:30 section. And parents have already begun to receive information about the Summer Skills Program that was appropriate for their child. And we're working on populating the classes. The Summer Enrichment Program will open the week of April 29th, and parents will get a communication about that. We will also run the Credit Redemption Recovery Program at the high school, and that will run Monday through Thursday, the 8th of July to the 25th. And there'll be two sessions of that as well, an 8 to 10:30 and a 10:30 to 1. And this program provides opportunities for students to earn back credits that they have lost during the academic year. So our focus is to improve understanding, build our competencies, and help them get their credits that they need. We are in the process of monitoring, and this is really a collaboration with the Guidance Department and the high school administration, and it goes right up almost to the end of school. We watch to see who may need what courses in order to gain the credits back. And then we offer the appropriate courses depending on the number of students and the need. That's all I have.
Any other questions?
So, Melinda, where are the programs taking place?
Great question. So our enrichment and the skills courses for the elementary and the middle school age students are going to be at the middle school. So the bulk of it is really there. We will have an enrichment, middle and high science STEM opportunity, and we usually hold that up here at the high school because the teachers that teach it are typically up here, so all of their materials are. And Credit Redemption for 912 will be here at the high school.
So everywhere is air conditioning?
Yes. And I was gonna say, we really have been very deliberate in terms of it being on the same campus, and we really do run it like a regular school. We have SROs, nurses, everything.
Is there any cost associated with either the skills program or the enrichment program?
There is not.
Thanks, Melinda.
Just a couple, a couple follow-up questions. So is the skills program ESY?
That is a different program.
It's a different program.
And Anthony, do you want to just jump in about your ESY news?
Sure, absolutely. I can talk a little bit more about ESY. So to ensure that we accommodate a lot of feedback in our students' needs and health and priority, we are actually going to make a big change with ESY this year. All of the elementary students will be housed here at the high school. So that allows our preschool to have an appropriate space, a playground, and it all will be air-conditioned. The high school will continue to be here as well, and the middle school program will remain at the middle school.
So it's going to be really nice. We're all going to be.
So we're all going to be on one campus, which will be very supportive and helpful.
That's good to hear. That was my question regarding the heat in the summer at Green Acres when my own children have attended. Is the Summer Enrichment Program open to all students?
It is. Communication will go out to families and then sign up this through like a Google form.
And one last question. Credit retrieval on different courses, is that computer-based program, or it's teachers teaching it?
So we have teachers teaching it. Typically, English and math are our highest needs, and then we see if there's other areas. We do have some digital platforms for specific classes that if a decision is made between the guidance counselor and the administration that we sometimes utilize as well. But we do offer in-person classes.
Thanks.
We unfortunately can't offer every subject area because we don't have the manpower, and it may only be like one student here and there, but we work really hard to try to find other avenues for them.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions? Joe, Goldie, Tyus, any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Interim Chief Operating Officer.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to begin, in your packet, you did receive the March financial report. I have addressed some of the lines that are still sitting in the negative in previous, but I would like to draw everyone's attention to one line that we have not addressed at this point, but it is currently running in the negative as of this month. That would be line 330F, which is our Certified Professional Tech. This account line accounts for our additional substitute teachers. This is not our building substitutes. These are the subs that we pay out of our Kelly Sub Line, and that line is currently now over budget and will be addressed with our end-of-the-year transfers to make sure that that line is balanced out. As always, the budget transfer report for March has been included and attached to this month's report. Items that are highlighted in yellow are those that would need to be approved by the board because these cross object codes within the general ledger. Any questions on the operating budget report for this month?
Thank you. It looks like we're running really hot on our insurance, our health insurance line item. We're at 96.4%. We have healthy reserves, which is really good, but just have we heard anything from the actuaries if they think we're going to continue to run hot?
We actually just had a recent meeting with Brown and Brown last week, April 4th, and we're doing okay.
Okay, that's good. And 201L, which is our pension line item, is 0.8%. Is that like a lump sum at the end of the year thing?
Yeah.
Yeah. If that makes sense. Perfect. Thank you.
Standby on Zoom. Goldie, Joe, Ty, any questions? Okay, thank you.
Ooh, I'm sorry.
Thanks, Goldie.
Just as informational you do have in your packet, where our special education, capital reserve, non-lapsing reserve, workers' compensation, and medical reserve account balances do lie, as well as in this month's report, we have gotten back on track with our reconciliation spreadsheets that you may have been accustomed to in years past. We're in a better place getting those reports from the town on a monthly basis to reconcile them.
Can I ask a question about the reserves?
Please.
So for the capital reserve, not capital, for the non-lapsing reserve account, how much of that do we have earmarked for those high-priority capital items for this year? I know we're sort of waiting to make sure that nothing else catastrophic happens, so we don't, you know, overspend. But if I'm remembering correctly, most of that money was earmarked for high-priority capital items.
Correct. So when we go back to how that money was laid out at this point, we've taken care of the Franken, the Frankincense Fence at Montwies, the piece of it that went to putting in the touch, the screens on the tech side, the pole work on the high school rope course has been done. We got the school, the high school chairs project completed. We do have our encumbrances for the Clintonville and high school flooring projects that were listed there as well. We did have the emergency tennis repair that needed to occur so we could actually play on the court this particular season. One of the things that helped out a little bit is we had, because there is also parent educator payroll that's coming out of that for two pairs that were allotted when we put this before the town with our plan. Those weren't filled right away, and then we had a person take that position and then step out of that for a little bit. So we are seeing some savings there at this particular time. So the only ones that are really on hold right now are actually the two sidewalk projects that we earmarked there. We are trying to be cautious and looking at some of the other expenditures that have come that we may have to target and make a higher priority at this time.
That's great. Thank you.
Sure. Transportation. At this time, I do not have a report from Mr. John Hipsher, our typical monthly report that we have received for the April meeting. But we did have our formal bid opening yesterday. It was well-attended. We had six bids submitted. We are currently in the process of reviewing those bids at this time.
That's great news. I think last time we had a bid, I think we only had one bid.
I'm shocked. It's.
Yeah.
It's a real mistake.
Superintendent Stirk did mention is that time of year where we have to start thinking about the end of the year, and something that we do at this time every year is actually come to the board for our Healthy Food Certification statute, which requires that each local Board of Education for public schools participating in the National School Lunch Program, which we do participate, must certify whether all food items sold to students separately from reimbursable meals will or will not meet the Connecticut nutrition standards. We typically put this before the board. And to be eligible for HFC next year, the Board of Ed must conduct these votes and formally approve with our meeting notes that such vote was taken no later than July 1st, which means we would need to vote this evening and then approve the actual minutes at the next Board of Ed meeting so that we could submit in a timely fashion. And with that being said, it is respectfully requested that the North Haven Board of Education votes this evening on whether to participate in the Healthy Food Certification for the 2024-2025 school year. Additionally, should the Board of Education vote yes to participate in the Healthy Food Option for next year, it is also respectfully asked that the board also vote to approve the food and beverage exemptions for the 2024-2025 school year.
What are the food and beverage exemptions? That is a leak question.
Yeah, what's that?
I'm sorry, Alan.
It's in Ron's motion.
I'm gonna go over the whole thing in the motion after we discuss the recommended transfers. Then we can go over the whole thing before.
Okay, okay.
And I'd be happy to.
I'm trying to understand what the exemptions are. Like no Coca-Cola or no, like, I don't.
We might have to.
Thank you.
My next item is more of an informational item at this time. One of the other projects I've been looking into is how could we expand HVAC in our elementary schools. And so I did begin at least looking at quotes, particularly for the cafeteria spaces in our elementary schools. Looking at our funding sources, you may recall back in September, I did present the fact that we, in our cafeteria account, the cafeteria account, I'd like to be very specific on this, exists outside of our operating budget. It is not part of what we request from the town. It is simply funded by our food sales and reimbursements that actually go directly into that particular account. That account is quite healthy right now. We can only hold no, in excess, excuse me, we can only hold three months of operating costs within that account because it cannot be a profit, it's not supposed to be profit generating. In working with our vendors, that would actually be, well, excuse me, let me back that up. Currently, we have $730,861.75 in that account. Once we go over that three-month threshold, which would in fact be $462,910, we have to develop a plan to spend down the excess costs. A plan was presented at the beginning of this school year where we have been spending that money down, but also realizing this as a possible funding source for HVAC, I began to explore the possibility by receiving quotes from Schaefer Beacon Mechanical, who has done HVAC projects in other elementary schools in Connecticut and is also on the state contract. And they provided us with a quote for all four elementary schools, which would cost us $390,943 to do all four elementary schools.
But it's not per, that's a total for the board.
That is correct.
To air-condition the cafeteria?
That is correct.
Yeah, okay.
And I think I want to actually, can I build off your question, why it was the cafeteria? We can only use these funds to enhance the food services. So it's only kitchen and cafeteria, but it was something that we wanted to explore. Through that process, I also was working with our contact at the state. We have to have these types of projects approved. And so when I initially presented it to them, we did actually in fact receive an initial okay to present this to the board as a possibility. We also took a step further to say, if we went forward with this project, how would that account look? Because we would go into that three-month buffer, if you will. And at that time, we felt quite safe in mapping out all of our liabilities, projected state reimbursements and sales against the account. And it was projected that in October, we would still be sitting on about $206,000 to the good in that account, which we felt quite safe. At the time of presenting this and submitting this to Joyce for your approval, at least in your notes, we were still sitting on approval from the state Friday morning. Friday afternoon, we received a follow-up phone call from the state that they were now reconsidering the project for approval. And so I'm providing this information to be transparent in our efforts in seeking alternative ways to fund such a project. Should we get an update from the state, I will immediately notify the Board of Education.
So it was maybe yes and then a no?
Yeah, did they mention why they reconsidered?
They felt that the project was a little bigger in scope when they looked at it again, to which I.
So they thought it was going to be more than the $400,000?
They just felt because the way our elementary cafeterias are, we researched and reached out to other districts, and other districts had actually gotten approval. And so we are sending those communications because there is precedent for this money being utilized for this source. Some of them have used smaller of the split AC units, and they felt that they were smaller, if you will. In looking at our cafeterias, for example, Montwies and Clintonville are good examples, the way they're designed. Montwies is a perfect example. It's almost a greenhouse there, and so you need a larger system to do it. And working with Schaefer and Beacon in terms of efficiencies, they felt that the systems that they were bringing forward would actually accomplish the job. The state, Ron, felt that the projects were bigger in scope, is what I was told on Friday afternoon.
Thanks. A question. If we aren't permitted to use the funds to add air conditioning, what other ideas do we have to use the funds for? Can we offer lunches to kiddos?
We could, and that's always a possibility. I think one of the things I wanted to be mindful of is, this is a result of a lot of the reimbursement we saw through the COVID crisis, and it's a pot of money that we may not see that level of resource again. So I want to be very mindful that if we have the opportunity to provide such an asset for our schools, that we do so thoughtfully. That's always an option. We could do that. We would probably just look at it as a resubmission of another spend-down.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think it's a question of whether we would prefer the air conditioning. I think what she's really saying, and the only part where it's in her mouth, but you know, Plan B is Plan B. We have to have Plan B, especially if you're going to be over that three-month threshold. So we need to know what the options are. State comes in Monday and says, no, you can't sit on that money. We have to have some.
Sure.
Plan of action for that.
We can actually resubmit. We can get to the end of the year and submit another spend-down plan for the start of the next school year as well.
Again, I think that what we're saying is, we should be churning some ideas on paper right now to kind of get that going in case the state does say next week, no. It's the state, so who knows what they're gonna say.
That's fair.
So they're coming back to us next week with a solid answer, or we're not sure?
We don't know. I emailed them again on Monday.
And I'm sure you've, I'm sure you've said, you know, we have to do this by X date because of, I mean, the air conditioning in the cafeteria would help so much, as you know, because then we could at least cycle students through the air conditioning. Because when we were, when I was looking at the calendar, in the back of my head, I was like, we need a Plan B for a hot day so that we're not calling half-days again randomly because it's so hot in the elementary schools. So I get the Plan B. I would love for Plan A to just work.
Yeah, yeah.
What have these funds been typically used for in the past when they have to get spent down?
Sure. So we, for example, this year, we purchased the new chairs in the middle school cafeteria. We did the window tinting on all four elementary schools. We did purchase HVAC units that actually were approved in the kitchens.
Right.
So we did do that work. We did purchase two new ovens that were acquired at the high school.
Okay.
Very, at all four elementaries, we, four new warmer trays, push carts, stainless steel tables.
So equipment.
Yeah, a lot of, and it has helped us out.
Yeah, I mean, none of those things are $10, those are 40, 50, 60,000 dollar items, the coolers.
Like the Clintonville walk-in cooler, which is set, that is actually coming out of this particular count as well. of this particular account as well.
Do we have any other questions?
Is there an expiration on those funds? I mean, is it like a end of school year that those have to be used?
Yeah, there really isn't. The state just says, you should really be demonstrating, what is your spend down plan? So for example, we had a spend down plan last year that we didn't utilize all of those funds and carried them to this year as well.
As long as you have a plan, they would let you carry.
You're correct.
We got a Plan A and a Plan B now, so minimize Plan B.
We don't need a Plan C.
Finally, just two brief moments. I'd like to echo, Joe had mentioned earlier, and Patrick had mentioned many of the great grants that we are getting from the North Haven Educational Foundation. We did receive a $9,000 grant to purchase new tables and umbrellas for the courtyard here at the high school. Mr. Anthony Giadano and Dr. Rustali are heading up the purchase of those. And then one last request. This evening, I would like to bring forward to the board, Mr. Birch Bidwell, a parent in the North Haven Public School System, has generously offered to donate an AED to our school system. The AED is valued at $1,700 and would contain the AED unit, battery, and an additional set of pads. If accepted, the donation is intended to be made available to the middle school and high school athletics department in order to assist with emergency preparedness for our student athletes.
Awesome. Do we have any other questions for Christian while we're here? Goldie, Joe, Tyus, any questions for Christian?
No, thank you so much.
Before I make a motion, I'd like to just make a quick comment. I would like to thank Christian, Patrick, Melinda, and the rest of the committee for the hard work they did in creating a presentation for our budget that was on display last Tuesday for the public at the auditorium. It is an incredible amount of work, and it's daunting, and it is difficult because no one likes to present monies at an increase at any time, especially in these days. But it is so important, the work that they do, and they were able to answer questions readily, and if you have any questions in the meantime, you're always welcome to ask. It's that important. So with that, we have a motion to approve the monthly financial report, including the recommended transfers. Second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? May I have a motion to approve the healthy food option as stated pursuant to GCS Section 10-215F. The North Haven Board of Education certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in the schools under its jurisdiction and not exempted from the Connecticut nutrition standards pledged by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with the Connecticut nutrition standards during the period of July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. This certification shall include an all-food offer for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, culinary programs, and any fundraising activities on school premises sponsored by the school or non-school organizations and groups. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Can I get a second? Discussion.
So we're just approving that all the food sold is healthy?
It basically meets the standard.
Right, right, okay.
All in favor? Joe, Goldie, Ty? Any opposed? May I have a motion to approve the beverage exemptions for the 2024-2025 school year as stated. The North Haven Board of Education will allow the sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut nutrition standards and beverages not listed in Section 10-221Q of the Connecticut general statutes, provided that the following conditions are met. The sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. The sale is at a location of the event, and the food items are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An event is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice, meeting, or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer games, school plays, intrascholastic debates are events, but soccer practices, play rehearsals, and debate team meetings are not. The regular school day is the period from midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of the official school day. Location means where the event is being held, and it must be the same place as the food sales. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Anybody on Zoom? Discussion, Goldie, Joe, Ty? Okay, thank you. All in favor? So move, thank you very much. May I have a motion to approve a donation of an automated external respirator from Mr. Bidwell, valued at $1,700? Second? Any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Bidwell.
Thank you, Mr. Bidwell, for sure. Appreciate it. All in favor? Any opposed? So move. The interim director student services report.
Thank you very much. Mine will be very short and sweet tonight. I really wanted to take the time to thank Tracy Gambardella and also Christie Scanlon for all their hard work and dedication in this very heavy lift to help recreate and redesign our preschool program. And I feel like it is now moving forward to help address our students' learning needs, and I'm very excited to see how this is going to unfold within our district. And I'm very proud to be part of this. So thank you for all the support and energy that you've put in this. And that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Anthony. Do we have any questions for Anthony? Anthony, take it easy on today. Okay, with that, I'd like to open up the floor for a public comment. This public comment will have to do with any agenda item.
I'm gonna talk loud.
Name, address, just for those who busted.
Tim Gabriel, Renee Lane, 18 Renee. Just wanted to just sort of formally ask if there's something that I could do to help with the sound in this room, because I feel like I've brought this up before. I'm hearing from people that are messaging me that like they're hearing like hissing on the audio. The TV is very difficult to hear, even you guys up here are very difficult to hear. So I just, I want to like work towards a solution. Do we talk to Dr. Dali about the facilities? Is it an NHTV thing or?
It's IT, and we're investigating solutions right now that somewhere will have some speakers and compatibility with the virtual component too, so you can also hear the board members. So we're working on it.
Okay.
It's definitely not going wrong that we know.
I know.
It falls myself, it's the fan, it's the.
A bunch of things.
It needs to be addressed, that's for sure.
Okay. Glad you're working on it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, see none. May I have a motion to adjourn the April 11, 2024, regular meeting of the Board of Education?
So move.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Next meeting is May 9th, 6:30.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Haven. Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.